All right.
Sure.
Mayor Lee, we are live. You can begin now.
Okay, thank you. Let me say good afternoon to everybody. Welcome to our June fifteenth, twenty twenty, Roanoke City Council regular session. And participation today will be by electronic communicating, communication pursuant to Amendment twenty eight, House Bill twenty nine, section four, dash oh, dash oh one, chapter twelve eighty-three, Virginia Acts of Assembly, twenty twenty, section two point two dash thirty-seven oh eight point two A, Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, ordinance number forty-one, seven oh three, oh three two seven twenty, and resolution number forty-one seventy-four, seven zero four, oh three two seven two oh. At this time, I will ask our clerk, Mrs. Suzie McCord, to please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Osborne?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Ms. White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Bestbitch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Yeah. Thank you. And all members of council are present and by electronic communications and declare that a quorum is, I declare that a quorum is present permitted by Amendment twenty-eight to House Bill twenty-nine, twenty-twenty session, section four dash zero point oh one, G, chapter of twelve eighty-three, Virginia Acts of Assembly, twenty-twenty session, Virginia Code, section two point two dash thirty-seven oh eight point two, and fifteen point two dash fourteen thirteen. I will lead us in the invocation. Following the invocation, we will have our pledge to allegiance. Please, let's pray. Eternal God, our Father, we come to you once again, thanking you for this day that you have given us. And Lord, we ask you now to guide us as we are elected and, and those who are appointed officials, undertake the business of this city. We thank you for all that you continue to do in our lives. And even though we're in the midst of a lot of uncertainty and confusion, we're going to trust you. We're going to trust you, Lord, because we know that you are a Savior that loves each and every one of us. We ask your blessings on those that are sick and, and in our community. Bless those families that are bereaved. Let them know, Lord, that you still love them in this climate and day and time that we live in. And we thank you. We thank you for so much because you've been good to us. And Lord, we ask you now to help us be the kind of servants that you are calling for in this day and time that we live. We give you praise. We give you honor. We give you glory. It is in the name of your Son that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. You have your flag with you, councilman. All right. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And welcome, everybody, to our second meeting in the month of June. Today's council meeting will be televised live and replayed on RBTV, Channel Three, on Thursday, June the eighteenth at seven o'clock PM, and Saturday, June twentieth at four o'clock PM. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/ronoVA. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. Each member of council has assessed through the Zoom meeting platform and can participate in this proceeding. The city has provided the public with information to allow the public access to observe this regular session through live broadcast on RBTV, live streaming on Facebook and on YouTube. The city has provided notice of this agenda and process to the public on Thursday, June the eleventh, twenty twenty. City staff, including the city manager, city clerk, the city attorney, and technical staff are present in the council chamber and are participating in this regular session. To facilitate the process today, to ensure that all council members and the public can follow these proceedings, I ask that whenever a member speaks, including making a motion, to first state the member's name and then make the motion or second. At this time, I ask members whether they have any questions about this process. If not, I'll ask the city manager to advise if he has any comments. All right, we'll move down to item number two on our agenda with the presentation acknowledgements, and we have none at the present time. We now move to item number three, which is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. City council assesses this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. Based on Executive Order number fifty-one issued by Governor Northam on March twelfth, twenty twenty, amended Executive Order number fifty-three on April the fifteenth, twenty twenty, Amendment twenty-eight to House Bill twenty-nine adopted April twenty-second, twenty twenty, section four dash oh point oh one G of chapter twelve eighty-three, Virginia Acts of Assembly, twenty-twenty session, Virginia Code, section two point two dash thirty-seven oh eight point two A, Virginia Code, section fifteen point two dash fourteen thirteen, ordinance number four one seven oh three, oh three two seven two oh, and resolution number four one seven oh four, oh three two seven two oh. City council will be conducting this regular session of city council by electronic communication means without a quorum of city council physically present in council chamber and without the presence of members of the public in the city council chamber. In order to afford citizens an opportunity to provide comments to city council during the COVID-nineteen pandemic disaster, citizens wishing to address the council during this regular session of city council conducted by electronic communication means were instructed to sign up by emailing or by calling the city clerk's office at clerk@ronoVA.gov and the number five four oh eight five three two five four one by twelve PM on June fifteenth today. Those citizens who have signed up to speak before the council have been provided the Zoom meeting information and will be allowed to join the meeting and address city council by electronic communication means. Our clerk will call off the names and begin and allow the persons to speak. And Madam Clerk, uh, each speaker will have three minutes. Is that accurate? I'm not sure how many speakers we have.
Yes, that's accurate.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll now have our clerk to give us the name of the speakers.
Mayor Lee, Members of Council, Dan Callahan, Roanoke City Attorney. In addition to allowing folks to speak, we encourage them to provide emails to you. You may have received some of them. We have twenty-five. I have a summary of them that I would present to you first, and then the clerk has five speakers who are signed up to speak and are in the queue and will be allowed to speak thereafter. And I will give you the summaries, and you will, you have several of the emails that were delivered to you, or you actually received them electronically because the citizen provided them to you. In addition, we received a number of emails today, and we will provide those to you following this hearing. And if you want any of them read in their entirety, I would be glad to do that. The first citizen is Robin Barnhill. She sent an email on June eleventh at eight thirty-nine PM. The summary of her comments are to remove the Lee monument from Lee Plaza. Ms. Barnhill attached a link to her, to a petition that as of June twelfth, twenty twenty, at two fifteen PM, one thousand eight hundred thirty-nine persons had signed the petition on behalf of the support to remove the Lee monument. Number two, Chris Miller, sent an email at June four at ten oh one PM. Chris Miller asked that the removal, that the council consider removing the Lee monument from Lee Plaza, recommends that city council use the new statute to, uh, new statute adopted by the General Assembly to remove the Lee monument from Lee Plaza. Clark Thomas, June sixth at one oh five PM, asked for the removal of the Lee monument from Lee Plaza. Mr. Thomas noted that his uncle, Richard Thomas, took care of the flags around Lee Plaza until the time of his death. Josh Nolan, June second at four forty-two PM, talking on the budget. Mr. Nolan recommends that city council reallocate some of the funds currently directed towards the police department to other programs. Mary Fisher Frazier, June second at five oh four PM, on the budget. Ms. Frazier recommends that city council reallocate some of the funds currently directed towards the police department to other programs. Austin Scherbach, S-C-H-E-R-B-A-R-T-H, June second, twenty twenty, at ten fifty-four PM, on the budget. Mr. Scherbach recommends that the city council reallocate, and I quote, "some of the funds currently directed towards the police department to other programs." Michaela Parish, June eleven at eleven forty-five AM. Ms. Parish, on the budget, Ms. Parish asked that city council delay the vote on the fiscal twenty twenty-one budget to afford citizens additional time, quote, "to weigh in on important questions regarding funding for policing and community safety." Ms. Parish noted that the events, quote, "following the death, the murder of George Floyd," close quote, "warrant a delay." Frida Cathcart, June twelve, twenty twenty, at twelve forty-two PM, on Mountain Valley Pipeline, Ms. Cathcart wants Roanoke Gas Company to exit from its contract with Mountain Valley Pipeline. G.S. Rosenthal, June twelve, twenty twenty, at three oh six PM, on the budget. Dr. Rosenthal asked that city council take two immediate steps with regard to the fiscal twenty twenty-one budget. First, reduce the twenty twenty-one budget for the police department to fiscal twenty twenty levels or lower. Second, release to the public budgetary details on all public funding and/or private grants received by the police department over the past ten years, including military transfers and from the federal government. Lizette Stone on the budget, Ms. Stone asked city councils to take two immediate steps with respect to the fiscal twenty twenty-one budget. They're the same steps that Dr. Rosenthal just asked. Kelly Prince, June twelve, twenty twenty, at one fifty-two PM. Kelly Prince asks council to take two immediate steps with regard to fiscal twenty twenty-one budget. They're the same comments raised by Lizette Stone and Dr. Rosenthal. Kelly Prince sent a second email at June twelve, twenty twenty, at one thirty-four PM. Seeks a delay in the adoption of the budget. This email includes a string of exchanges between council member Bestbitch and, and Kelly Prince. Mary Kay Khan, June fifteen at ten twenty-two AM. "Defunding the police department at this time does not make sense. Give the police chief an opportunity to correct those officers who do not respond appropriately and to provide more sensitivity training to all officers. Moving money is not the answer, excuse me. If procedures need to be revised and officers need to be retained, given additional training, maybe well-supervised, money is needed to do that." A. Newsendorfer, at June fifteen at twelve forty-five PM. "Any discussion regarding the defunding of police be tabled until this issue can be evaluated thoroughly. Racism and police brutality are terrible and not condoned. We still have an opioid epidemic and outside heroin influx in this area that still needs to be addressed and resolved." Keisha Preston, on the budget, asks that you consider amendments to the budget. She does note that, I understand, the budget was recently passed to remain in compliance with law. As a note, my editorial note, the budget will be considered later this afternoon. Changes don't have to wait until next year, and I urge you to contemplate amendments to pull funding from local police and reinvest them where you, they would do more good. This is an email from Rose Wyatt at twelve at six nineteen PM. This is with regard to the budget, is seeking that amendments be made. This, this, she raises the same two comments that Professor, Dr. Rosenthal had raised with regard to the two immediate items with regard to lowering the police budget and detail of public funds. Miranda Cressy, sent an email on June twelve, twenty twenty, at eight thirty PM. Ms. Cressy asked the same two items that Dr. Rosenthal asked with regard to the budget, specifically reducing funding to twenty twenty levels and releasing all the budgetary details. Ellen Weber or Weaver, W-E-B-E-R, sent an email on June thirteen at ten fifty AM. Ms. Weaver or Weber asked for the same relief that Dr. Rosenthal asked for. June thirteen at twenty, at eleven thirty-eight PM, Shanti Smith is on the budget. She asked for the same relief that Dr. Rosenthal initiated. Mary Frazier, on June fourteen at six nineteen PM. Ms. Frazier asked for the same relief on the budget with regard, that Dr. Rosenthal first began. This is Malinda Britt, B-R-I-T-T, sent an email on June fourteen at nine fifty-six PM. Ms. Britt asked for the same relief that Dr. Rosenthal initiated in her email that was read first on this matter. Email from Emily Hannah, H-A-N-N-A-H, June fifteen at six twelve AM. Ms. Hannah is, is writing on behalf of the budget. She's a resident of Roanoke City. She urges the council to act creatively and courageously and, and dealing and trying to address with the police funding and, and police budgets, noting it specifically that budgets seem to be going up every year with regard to the police department. Nathan, excuse me, Nathaniel Wolf, W-U-L-F-F, sent an email on June fifteen, twenty twenty, at six fifty-three AM. Mr. Wolf asked for the same relief that was initiated in the first email read on this matter with regard to Dr. Rosenthal. The two items again are to propose an amendment to the budget to reduce police funding to twenty twenty levels and details with regard to all funding sources. Number, the, Mr. Rosenthal sent another email. That may be the same one. G.S. Rosenthal, it is. And there is an addition, a last email. I don't have the time. It just came in just before this session began from Tatiana Duran, who also asked on the budget that you take actions with regard to the budget. I believe Mrs. Duran may actually be signed up to speak, so she can probably address those comments as well. That concludes the emails that we received prior to this session. We will provide all emails to city council later this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Callahan, can everybody hear me okay? Thank you. And we will ask our city manager to respond to, to, to those.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
We also have speakers signed up to speak on the Zoom, and they're ready to come in once they are announced. We have five speakers.
Okay, go ahead, please. Start the Zoom conversations.
Our first speaker is Tatiana Durant.
Hi. Today I am speaking briefly about the what and why of defunding the Roanoke Police Department. We do not want to dismantle the entire police department overnight, but in the interest of meeting the needs of our communities, Black and non-Black, we demand divestment from the police department and investment in more vital institutions. We do not want police reform because history and research shows reform to be ineffective at addressing systemic racism. As Roanoke prepares to reopen schools under the threat of COVID-nineteen, we're not in our best interest to defund education by five hundred thousand dollars and infrastructure by seven hundred thousand, and leave the community to do more with less support. Those suffering disproportionately from COVID in the Roanoke Valley are primarily essential workers of marginalized races. Where is their support? Instead, we note the continued investment in programs proven to be ineffective, such as school resource officers and the DARE program. Divesting offers Roanoke City the opportunity to join a national reassessment of what a healthy community needs. We may seem like a privileged city to not have experienced the same police brutality that other cities have, but we have wounds, wounds which RPD seems only prepared to make worse. Though they are not technically responsible, RPT, RBD refuses to acknowledge that they are part of the same racist institution that killed Kante Spencer. Our peaceful march against systemic racism was violated. Our militarized police were prepared with masks to protect themselves from their own tear gas, but not surgical masks to prepare the spread, to prevent the spread of COVID. The police here were prepared to enact violence, not de-escalation. The list goes on, but I don't have time to share more. Mr. Lee, you said you and the new police chief can, quote, "talk about funding." He will need time to look at all of that. We have used our time for research and communication, and we have witnessed the violence the police use their time for. Policing cannot give us what we need. Roanoke City's wounds are real, and the solution is clear. Divest to reinvest. Build a resilient community through non-violence. Our current demands are to first delay the adoption vote until next week, which is before July first, before then host another public hearing this week to hear the people's request and modify the budget to combat racism. A petition created by NJNP released these demands, and it now has over one thousand signatures in agreement. Second, publish a transparent itemization of all public and private funding and spending for the RP, RP, RPD and Sheriff's Department. Last, remove cops from our schools and use that money to properly protect public school students and staff from COVID-nineteen. We will continue to be assertive, not aggressive, but until there is restorative justice, no one will have peace. I also offer myself, Tatiana Durant, to have conversations, to discuss solutions with any city council member or the chief of police at any time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second speaker is Catherine Koble.
Hello, yes. I'd like to echo what we just heard and support that. I'd like to point out that the we have in recent Google search history four separate instances of school resource officers and DARE officers in our high, in high schools and middle schools pepper spraying students. This is dangerous, especially during a pandemic. And these are the sorts of things that were also done to protesters with no provocation. This is, uh, this is a dangerous type of activity to have going on in, in our schools, especially when kids go, you know, if kids are going back in the fall. This is not something we can have in our hallways. We cannot have pepper spray being released upon children who are also being subject to risk of COVID to experience their education. So I too ask that we defund all the DARE officers, that we defund all the school resource officers. I believe there's over five million dollars for school resource officers and DARE funding in the budget. That is a lot of money to be devoting to school resource officers who have mostly pepper sprayed students as the outcome of, of their, of their existence in the schools. We can have different types of public safety. If we need someone to talk to kids about drugs and the impacts of drugs, we need to have a public health approach. We have an award-winning city, and we have an award-winning author in Beth Macy, who so well put forth how our opioid epidemic needs a public health and, and, and an approach that is a non-criminalization approach, that we need treatment, not jail. And in order to enact this fully in our schools, we need to have nurses doing our education on drugs and drug use and the impacts of drugs on the body. These are the kinds of folks, school nurses are going to be much more important in protecting our kids in this, in this upcoming school year than any funding for any possible gun in the school could possibly be, or pepper spray in the school could possibly be. We need to keep our kids safe with school nurses, not with guns. I'm also going to ask for you to keep us safe by starting to work on some ordinances. We, um, coming up July one, we will have the ability to ban guns in city council meetings. We will have the ability to ban guns at permitted events. And we have, um, we have the ability to ban guns on city buses. We'll have the ability to ban guns in numerous places given to you by state authority on July one. And in, and in office, and in Roanoke office, the office buildings that are owned by Roanoke City and in city parks. This would all dramatically improve our public safety more than funding something like school resource officers. We know that we have right now an increased presence of white supremacists with guns roaming our city. There were just twenty who roamed around freely with AR-15 the evening after peaceful protesters coming to city council were pepper sprayed. They came and were, and walked all over, all over the city in fatigues, imitating the military and received absolutely no pepper spray.
Time has expired, and we will take the next speaker.
Our next speaker, speaker number three, is Heather Lawson.
Hello, okay. Hello, I'm greeting council members. I spent time attending meetings around the city last year in order to learn more about our community. I saw many of you at the Moda meetings, Gun Violence Task Force meetings, city council meetings, and school board meetings, as well as meetings with grassroots organizations that have been working toward a more equitable city. I've come in front of you this past year to ask that you divest from our city police and sheriff departments and invest back into the community with the Roanoke Jail Solidarity Group after the repeated tragic deaths that have happened to the people incarcerated in our city jail. I stood at almost every school board meeting last year asking them to end privatized contracts for our city schools bus system. I'm not sure how else to ask at this point, but I'll keep trying. My current requests are, one, that we please wait to pass the budget until we can have a community forum. until we can have a community forum. Two, divest from our city police department sheriff's office to include the SROs and the DARE program in our city schools. The city jail has had countless issues keeping incarcerated citizens safe. We need to focus on what we can invest in programs that will support our community, including healthcare, housing, and jobs that pay living wages. These programs in our school, DARE and the SROs, are not helping our students foster an environment of safe learning in a trauma-informed district. We have just placed a freeze on our city teachers' pay. We need to look at how we can directly fund more guidance counselors as a safety net instead of more trained police officers. Three, move forward with banning firearms in our city buildings and public spaces under the full scope of what the state will currently allow, including our schools. Four, more accountability from our police department about how this Saturday Black Lives Matter march was handled. My children and I witnessed our city's police department go full riot gear on us as we marched peacefully through our city. It is unconscionable that the police would utilize these tactics, tactics on us and the people in our community. I don't ask anything lightly. I have children in our schools, and I have lived in Roanoke in both the city and the county my whole life. This city is our home, and we have a responsibility to do right by the community and the children that live here. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Barbara Andy, speaker number four. Okay, we will go on to our next speaker. This is the last speaker, Frida Catcar.
Hello.
Hello, can you hear me? Are you able to hear me? Yes?
Yes.
I'm here now, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I wanted to talk about the opportunity that Roanoke Gas has to exit their contract for capacity from the Mountain Valley Pipeline. Over 100 individuals and organizations have signed a letter to Roanoke Gas asking them to exercise this option. And I'm hoping that you as individuals and also as Roanoke City Council will join this effort. It's a good opportunity for them to take, to get out of a bad business decision. This past week, last Friday, Thomas Hadwin, an executive for electric and gas utilities, or he's a former executive for gas and electric utilities, had an article that he had published in the Roanoke Times, and I sent you the hyperlink to that. And that article, and I wanted you all to realize, in case you didn't, the Mountain Valley Pipeline is not completed, it's not in operation. That's why Roanoke Gas can exercise this clause in their contract. In Thomas Hadwin's article, he says, "If Roanoke Gas fails to notify the MVP by the end of June that it wants to get out of its contract, the chance is gone forever. If Roanoke Gas misses this chance, it will owe the MVP $112 million over 20 years, regardless of how much of the reserved capacity is actually used. The gas company expects to be allowed to pass this cost on to its customers. If more pipeline capacity is needed, it would be much cheaper to get it from the existing suppliers, Columbia Gas and East Tennessee. They get their gas from the same area that MVP would use at about the same price. The East Tennessee Pipeline would transport gas seven times cheaper than the MVP based on published rates. Columbia Gas would transport gas at least six times cheaper than the MVP. However, if the MVP overcomes the determining financing challenges that remain and completes the pipeline, Roanoke Gas could obtain gas and the amount it needed, when it needed, without being obligated to pay the $100 million for a 20-year contract." So essentially, the utility makes no extra money from the MVP. It is merely the bill collector for the owners of the MVP. Staying with the MVP contract increases costs to residents and businesses in the Roanoke Valley for no added benefit. Now, this impacts the Roanoke City budget, too. You think about how many schools are, get, are hooked into Roanoke Gas, use that utility? How many of our municipal buildings, our hospitals? It's really important for us to keep the cost down for our utilities, and it's Roanoke Gas's responsibility to exercise their ability to get out of this contract. Did you say my time is up?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Next speaker, no additional speakers.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. And we will make sure that the comments that were given will be passed on to our city manager, and he will get back with those, those speakers. All right, now we'll move to item number four on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of the items. At discussion of his desire, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. There is one request for a closed meeting to be conducted by electronic communication means from the city manager to discuss vacancies on the Star City Strong Response Recovery Resilience Framework Task Force pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 A1, Court of Virginia, 1950, as amended. I now need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. A motion.
Bill Bessbitch, I move the Consent Agenda.
Gina Osborne, I second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boy?
Aye.
Ms. Bessbitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the Consent Agenda is approved. We move now to the regular agenda. Now, item number five is a public hearings, and we have none at this time. Item number six, petitions and communications, we have none. And item number seven is a report of city officers and comments of the city manager. All right, item number seven, A1, is the acceptance of the BJA FY20 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding from the United States Department of Justice to prevent, prepare, and respond to the coronavirus. There are two measures. First, we need to act on the resolution. Can I get a motion in a second?
Gina Osborne, so moved.
Anita Price, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
Resolution authorizing acceptance of the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant made to the City of Roanoke City Police Department by the United States Department of Justice, Rurs of Justice Assistance Office, and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
Are there any questions or comments by members of council?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could, could Bob just elaborate on this a bit? Is this additional relief funding from the federal government? What specifically can this be utilized for?
It is additional grant dollars, and it is specifically for PPE. So masks, gloves, those types of things. But yes, it is, it is money above what we've already previously received out of other sources.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boy?
Aye.
Ms. Bessbitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the vote is unanimous, and the resolution passes. Thank you. There is a budget ordinance.
First, I move the ordinance.
Vice Mayor Cobb, second.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the title paragraph?
Ordinance to appropriate funding from the federal government, Department of Justice, for the Coronavirus Emergency Supplement Funding Program, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2019-2020 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by members of council? Heard none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boy?
Aye.
Ms. Bessbitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. We now move down to item seven, A2, which is the acceptance of the FY2020, 2021 National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, North Carolina and Virginia Rivers and Water Program Grant Funds to benefit, to benefit fish, wildlife, and plant resources, and improve water quality and the ripening environment and ecosystem. There are two measures, a resolution and a budget. Could I get a motion on the resolution?
Bill Bessbitch, I move the resolution.
Gina Osborne, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
A resolution accepting the North Carolina and Virginia Rivers and Water Program Grant made to the city from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, are there any comments or questions by members of council?
Mr. Mayor, Bill Bessbitch, just very quickly, I just want to point out that this is one more step in many steps that have been taken, and many steps that will remain to be taken after this one to improve the quality of the water in our river and our tributaries, such as Tinker Creek and Peters Creek that feed into the Roanoke River. These, as was noted, these contaminant harm fish and wildlife and plants, and they also make the river less usable for the blue way that is becoming more and more popular. So everything that we can do to move in this direction is progress, and I hope we will continue to look for these funds going forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bessbitch. Any other comments or questions? Heard none, I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boy?
Aye.
Ms. Bessbitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the vote is unanimous, and the budget ordinance, I mean, the vote is unanimous, and the resolution passes. We now have a budget ordinance.
Bill Bessbitch, move the budget ordinance.
Trish White Boy, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
And ordinance to appropriate funding from stormwater utility funds from the NFWF North Carolina and Virginia Rivers and Waters Program Grant to address identified stormwater PCP monitoring and tracking efforts on Tinker Creek, Peters Creek, and the Roanoke River, amending and reordaining certain sections of 2019-2020 stormwater utility funds, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions by members of council? Seemed, or heard none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boy?
Aye.
Ms. Bessbitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the vote is unanimous, and this budget ordinance passes. Thank you. We're now down to item 713, 783, which is the appropriation of stormwater utility fund retained earnings. There's a budget ordinance.
Gina Osborne, move the budget ordinance.
Anita Price, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph, please?
And ordinance to appropriate funding from stormwater utility retained earnings to supplement operational funds to address identified stormwater projects and needs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2019-2020 stormwater utility fund appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by members of council? Heard none, Madam Clerk, I'll ask, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boy?
I'm sorry, aye.
Ms. Bessbitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number four is the appropriation of stormwater local assistance funds in connection with the Lit Run Stream Restoration Project at the Roanoke Blacksburg Regional Airport. There's a budget ordinance.
Trish White Boy, move the ordinance.
Gina Osborne, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph.
And ordinance to de-appropriate funding from the DEQ SLAF Grant Funds from the Lit Run Stream Restoration Project at the Roanoke Blacksburg Airport, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2019-2020 Stormwater Projects Fund Appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any question by members of council?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boy?
Aye.
Ms. Bessbitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the vote passes unanimously, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. All right, we're now down to item five and number 11. Let me just state and remind our viewers and listeners that we receive our council packages several days before our council meeting, and that gives us an opportunity to talk with the city staff on any questions or concerns that we may have. So as you see us go through these packages, we've had the information before us, and in many cases have had an opportunity to address whatever concerns or questions that we have. Item number five, an amendment to the city code as it pertains to certain real estate tax exemptions for rehabilitating property in the city. And there's an ordinance.
I move the ordinance, Bill Bessbitch?
Gina Osborne, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
And ordinance amending and reordaining Division 5, exemption of certain rehabilitated real property. exemption of certain rehabilitated real property, Division Five B, exemption of certain rehabilitated or renovated commercial, mixed-use commercial with no more than eighty percent residential or industrial real property located in Enterprise Zone One A, Division Five C, partial tax exemption in redevelopment and conservation areas and rehabilitation districts. All of the Article Two Real Estate Taxes generally of Chapter Thirty-two, taxation of the Code of the City of Roanoke as amended, which provides for certain real estate tax exemptions for rehabilitating property in the city, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by time.
All right, members of council, any questions or concern? I have one. I just want to ask Mr. Cowell if he could briefly just share with us what this saying or given interpretation, so our citizens will understand what this means, especially, uh,
There, there are several components to this, and you all may recall, actually, this conversation started back, um, all the way back at our retreat, actually, and then has worked its way through a couple of briefings with, um, with council. I, I will highlight just a couple of the significant changes. The, um, most of the changes had to do with housekeeping, um, items, but there are some substantive ones, and probably the most substantive, um, is previously it simply referred to the age of a structure. So it indicated that if something was forty years or older, for example, and now there is a date certain that it has to have been constructed prior to, and that was just so that it would, um, sort of, uh, be able to live longer, if you will, as it goes forward. Um, other items included, um, adjusting the, uh, the fees to try to ensure that the costs of actually managing and processing it, um, were, um, were covered as well. And, um, and then there were a few other adjustments made to the values of the improvements, and there was a division between, um, the, a clearer division between single-family residential and multifamily residential and the, uh, commercial, and then you heard reference to the mixed-use structures as well. So there's some clarifications associated with those as well. So most of it was to kind of make it more contemporary in its language, but those were some of the more substantive changes, um, that went into the program. And again, this program is designed to facilitate the rehabilitation of, um, re, of structures that we have within the city, um, ultimately so that their values are maintained or increased so that, um, over time, you not only are making sure that the structures themselves, um, remain safe and useful, but also that the, um, the value of those structures continue to increase, and therefore, of course, the revenues, um, will increase eventually, overcoming what has changed relative to the abatement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number six.
We need to call the roll, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. If there are no further questions, please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bestbitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you all unanimously. All right, item number six is the acquisition of real property rights in connection with the Campbell Avenue Stormwater Improvement Project. There's an ordinance.
First White, move the ordinance.
Vice Mayor Cobb, second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance providing for the acquisition of real property rights needed by the city in connection with the Campbell Avenue Stormwater Improvement Project, authorizing city staff to acquire such property rights by negotiation for the city, authorizing the city manager to execute appropriate acquisition documents, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by time.
Thank you. Any comments or questions by members of council? Heard none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bestbitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the vote is unanimous and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number seven is the acquisition of real property rights in connection with the Patterson Avenue and Chapman Avenue Southwest Stormwater Drainage Improvement Project. There is an ordinance.
Move the budget.
Go ahead, Trish.
First Whiteboy, move the budget ordinance.
Second, Vice Mayor Cobb.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance providing for the acquisition of real property rights needed by the city in connection with the Stormwater Drainage Improvement Project, Patterson Avenue Southwest, and Chapman Avenue Southwest, authorizing city staff to acquire such property rights by negotiation for the city, authorizing the city manager to execute appropriate acquisition documents, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Are any questions or comments by members of council? Heard none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price? Ms. Price, believe me.
Aye, sorry.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bestbitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Hello, my audio is, is moving.
Ma, Mayor Lee, we need your vote.
Why, Madam Clerk, I couldn't, I couldn't hear any of the other speakers.
Okay, we need your vote on this last measure. Mayor Lee, can you hear me? Okay, now you're on mute.
Hey.
Now the last vote. Did you vote?
No, I didn't vote. My, I went out. Uh, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Uh, uh, my vote is yea.
Thank you.
So the ordinance passes. All right, we're now, uh, on item number eight, which is amendment to the twenty fifteen, twenty nineteen HUD Consolidated Plan. There's a resolution. And let me say that a public hearing was held on the matter to hear citizens' comments on June first, twenty twenty. The public hearing was opened and closed on June first, twenty twenty, and the public comment period ended, uh, on June twelfth, twenty twenty. So there's a resolution.
Bill Bestbitch, motion, resolution.
June Osborne, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
A resolution approving an amendment to the City of Roanoke's twenty fifteen through twenty nineteen Consulting Plan through its twenty nineteen, twenty twenty annual plan to reallocate certain unspent community development block grant funds from emergency solutions grant funds received by the city from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty plan year due to the COVID-nineteen disaster. Authorizing the city manager or the city managers designate to submit such amendment to HUD for final review and approval, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents required for such amendment.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by members of council? All right, not hearing any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bestbitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the vote is unanimous and the resolution passes. Thank you. Item number nine is an execution of amendment number one to the first reinstated agreement for the exchange of real estate between the City of Roanoke and Rutherford Partners LLC in connection with the new transport, transportation facility. There is an ordinance.
Anita Price, I move the ordinance.
Michelle Davis, second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number one to the first reinstated agreement between the City of Roanoke, Virginia, and Rutherford Partners LLC dated September seventeen, twenty nineteen, to provide for, one, the sale and transfer of Campbell Court as described below from the city to the developer, and two, the acquisition of the future rail station parcels as described below by the city from the developer, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by time.
Thank you. Any comments or questions by members of council?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Price.
Yes, I just want to, to just, uh, add that on this measure and the next one coming up, uh, GRTC had its board meeting this morning and unanimously, uh, agreed to the action, uh, taken to begin the first leg of providing this new transportation, uh, facility. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's, that's exciting stuff, glad to see that get going. Thank you. All right, any other comments from members of council? Heard none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bestbitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number ten is the execution of amendment number one to the first reinstated agreement for the exchange of real estate between the City of Roanoke and Greater Roanoke Transit Company in connection with a new transportation facility. There is an ordinance.
Anita Price, move the ordinance. First Whiteboy, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number one to the first reinstated agreement for the exchange of real estate between the City of Roanoke, Virginia, and Greater Roanoke Transit Company dated September seventeen, twenty nineteen, to provide for, one, the sale and transfer of the GRT relocation parcels as described below to the Greater Roanoke Transit Company from the City of Roanoke, Virginia, and two, the acquisition of Campbell Court as described below by the city from GRTC, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of council? Heard none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne? Ms. Osborne, I didn't hear you. Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bestbitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you all. Item number eleven is the execution of change order number three to the contract between the City of Roanoke and Echo Tone Incorporated for the Washington Park Stream Restoration Project. There's a resolution.
Bill Bestbitch, move the resolution.
June Osborne, second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the city manager's issuance and execution of an amendment to the city's contract with Echo Tone Inc. for a bridge access path for the stream restoration of the Lit Run Tributary of the Roanoke River that runs through Washington Park, and authorizing the city manager to take such actions and execute such documents as may be necessary to provide for the implementation, administration, and enforcement of such amendment to the above-mentioned contract as well as the contract itself.
All right, any questions or comments by members of council? Heard none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bestbitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you all. Right now, I'm pleased to recognize the city manager, Mr. Bob Cowell, for any comments that he may have.
Mayor and council, uh, have, have nothing further to add this evening. Um, meeting will be long enough, so nothing to add to it, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. All right, uh, item number B, uh, we're down now to, I know, B, uh, municipal auditor. And this is presentation of the City of Roanoke General Audit Plan, John Aldrich Partner, Brown Edwards Certified Public Accountant. And, uh, I want to recognize Mr. Aldrich to present the information, and he will be on the phone. Thank you, Aldrich.
All right, you, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Good deal. Well, as you said, Mayor Lee, um, you all do have this information ahead of time, and you do have a big schedule, so I'm not going to go through page by page, but I will keep this very high level and answer questions. As you know, even though with COVID and everything else going on, you still have to get your audit done. And so, we're here today just to, just to give you an overview of the audit process, um, give you some insight, answer any questions you all might have. Uh, in your packet, you would have from us, from Brown Edwards, just the au- audit plan, and it should be approximately seventeen pages long. What I want to talk to you about briefly today is the actual audit process has not changed much for this year. Uh, the standards, a lot of things were going to change, and, uh, the GASP, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board deferred everything. So anything that was supposed to be new this year got kicked down the road a year. So that's good news. The other thing is, if you're calling the past, the audits were due to the state by November thirtieth. Well, that has also changed. Now they are due December fifteenth. So that, that is a little bit of a change this year to last year. In looking at the audit, the areas where I think we're going to spend a good amount of time this year will be just on the disruption of workflow, meaning since you've had employees stay home, since you have disrupted how business is conducted, we want to make sure that the controls have not broken down. So as we're doing testing, we're going to spend a little time there looking at controls uh, with remote employees to make sure there aren't breakdowns there. So we will cover that. The other thing we're going to look at is always, uh, will be the federal money that comes through the city. The bulk of that testing is going to be looking at the Adoption Assistance Program, Foster Care, Highway Construction. Those right now are the three programs I know that we are going to look at. You also know that the city received quite a bit of COVID money or money from the CARES Fund, and that testing probably will be deferred until twenty twenty-one, because the way it works, you test based on when you spend the money, not when you get the money. So you have to test to make sure expenditures were eligible, so that might take place next year, uh, in twenty twenty-one. Also, I want to remind you, uh, the school system, they also get federal money, but that's in a whole, uh, different bucket. So that's looked at separately than the actual city's, uh, federal money that comes through. As well as GRTC, if they were to receive any federal money, that is treated as separate from the city when we determine what we have to test. But again, uh, to date, we have worked with your staff, but our people have already started doing some interim testing. Uh, we're making good progress there, all things considered. And like I said, uh, we're happy to be here. This will be our second year back with you all, and we had a good experience last year, and I think going and I think going forward, this will be even better. But with that being said, that was pretty high level, but I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Why, does anybody have any questions or concern? Thank you, John, we appreciate that report.
Thank you so much.
And it will be received and filed. All right, item number eight is reports of committees. Report of committees in eight A is reported the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriations of funds for various educational programs. And a report of the city manager recommending that council concur in the request. Donna, our director of accounting is the spokesperson. There is a budget ordinance.
Anita Price, move the budget ordinance.
Gina Osborne, second.
Could you please read the title paragraph?
...to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth and private grant for various educational programs, amending and re-eradining certain sections of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by time of this ordinance.
All right. Are there any questions for members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Bitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the vote is unanimous, the budget ordinance passes. All right, item nine is unfinished business, we have none. Item number ten is introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. There is, ten A is a resolution commending the services rendered to the city of Roanoke by Robert Brian Townsend. I didn't know his name was Robert. As assistant city manager for community development on the occasion of his retirement. And I've been knowing him for fifteen, almost, it's almost been sixteen years now. So, there is a resolution.
Move the resolution, Bill Best Bitch.
Anita Price, second.
All right. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution recognizing and commending the services rendered to the city by Robert Brian Townsend as the assistant city manager of community development and expressing the gratitude and appreciation of the city and its people for his service.
All right, any questions or comments by members of city council, and I'll go right down them, right down the line. I'll start with Mr. Best Bitch and come right down the line.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I certainly want to thank Brian for all his hard work. I won't, I won't get all the skeletons out of the closet right now, but I will say that he and I had to roll up our sleeves on a number of occasions and really work on some serious issues and and try to do things that would be in the best interest of the citizens of this city. And at the same time, we've learned not to take ourselves too seriously. I will really miss the joking and teasing each other that we have been able to to engage in over the years. And I hope, I hope that his house doesn't sell anytime soon, because he told me he can't, he can't leave Roanoke until his house sells. So, just anybody looking for a house, send him to a different neighborhood. Thank you, Brian, for everything that you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Best Bitch. All right, Vice Mayor Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, as a fellow introvert, I appreciate your working style, the ways in which you do your research, work so much behind the scenes, building bridges, bringing people together, finding solutions, and you've done this all of the years that you've worked for the city. I just want you to know how much I appreciate you, how much I'm going to miss you, and I hope that every moment of your retirement is filled with joy and delight and lots of great experiences. Thank you so much.
All right, Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Mayor Lee, I appreciate the opportunity to tell Mr. Townsend. You know, when I first became acquainted with you, I was at the City Market Building and was responding or responsible for helping provide comments to city council on the work at the City Market Building. And honestly, you and Sherman together helped, I think, me understand what city government does, what its responsibilities are, and how everything works together, hopefully for the benefit of all of our citizens. That's always our goal. So, I just want to thank you for that introduction. Thank you for always being you, and I know anybody who's ever worked with you knows exactly what that means. You are, you are one of a kind, and you have a way of conveying information and being really funny at the same time, which we all appreciate. That comic relief is so needed and so necessary sometimes. So, just thank you for all that you've done. You have probably, I mean, to list off the accomplishments that you have helped the city achieve during your tenure here at the city would take us hours. We would be going into the night. It is just incredible the amount of work that you've done, and so much of which will go unrecognized, because people have no idea how much behind the scenes work you always do for the city. So, thank you. This doesn't seem right to be doing this electronically and not having some kind of big send-off for you in person, so while I hope your house sells, because I mean, that's what you need to have done, I do hope that we will be able to, at some point, get you back here to have some kind of official in-person send-off when it's safe to do so, because you certainly deserve that. And a wonderful retirement. You, you deserve every second of peace and quiet that you seek. So, thank you for everything, Brian, we really, really will miss you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Osborne?
Brian, I'm sorry I'm not there to give you a big, big hug and send you off on into retirement on your merry way. I do hope, as Michelle said, that we do get to see you again sometime soon, although I imagine we would have to drag you back into chambers for that kind of thing to happen. I just wish you all the best in retirement. I'm a little envious of retirement, and I hope you really, really enjoy it and live life to the fullest, and the parking lots are going to really miss you.
All right, Ms. Price?
Brian, I just want to say ditto to what everyone has said already, and Michelle, you stole my line, because I wanted to say to Brian, you are definitely one of a kind. Over the years, it has been a absolute combination of a lot of different emotions and work, working with you, because you don't miss words and you know how to get the job done. As Bill said, you know, there's been a lot of skeletons and a lot of joys and challenges that you have helped the city to overcome and to achieve. So, for all that you've accomplished and all that you've done, like everyone has said behind the scenes, thank you so very much. I'm going to miss watch, looking at you out there in chambers, shaking your head and coming to the podium, give the information as it should be presented. And I'm also going to miss, although I hope it will continue, and I do want to thank you for this, the emails that you send out whenever there is trouble in our city. That is something that many people don't know how much you stay on top of what's going on, and to keep us surprised of equally knowing what's going on around the city. So, enjoy your retirement. This is definitely weird, and you definitely have to come back, because I'm with you in a, some kind of way, I'm going to give you a hug, no matter what. So, God bless you and congratulations.
Thank you. Councilwoman Trish White Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, of course, everyone has said everything that just about that needed to be said, but I, I will be quite frank, I had to take another look at my agenda when I saw that retirement. I wanted to make sure I was reading it correctly. Kind of caught me off guard. I was really surprised, but I know it's time. I will say that I appreciate how you brought me in and walked me through the process and spent that time with me. I'm also to say that I am going to miss that smile. You, you say I have some good news and I have some bad news, and we can't tell which is good or which is bad, because you always have that smile, that no drama, Brian, and I'm, I'm really going to miss seeing you out there, like Anita said, shaking your head one way or the other, and your face does not lie. It will tell the truth. So, I appreciate your, your candor, and I'm going to miss you and good luck in your retirement.
Thank you. Brian, for all the years I've been in here, thank you for your service. You really, really, really made this city an all-American city, and I'm going to miss you, and as Anita and Trish have stated, a lot of times I look out and see you here, when you're looking down, shaking your head, and I'm hearing speakers talking, and I'm saying, okay, this is not going where we think it ought to go. And I want to thank you, because you're right there when I call you and say, and will ask you, Brian, what in the world is this reporter talking about? Give me something to respond to that. You're right there on the spot, and I think you know every corner, every curve around this city, because I can bring up some areas, and you're right there, you know that. So, you, you've done well, very well in our city. All of us can attest to the fact that you've helped us in some way, and you've really been a, not only a supporter, but helped me personally, not only as a councilman, but a councilman, but also a mayor, and so, thank you. And I wish you well in your retirement and be safe and stay in touch. God bless.
Mayor, if I, if I can further embarrass Brian, if I may, well, I'm surprised he came back in here. Y'all don't know that right before this, he walked out the door, and I thought for sure he wasn't going to come back, so I'm a little surprised that he came back. But I, I just wanted to just quickly say a few things as well. Of course, when I interviewed for this position, the, the search firm that was doing the work made it very clear that I had two assistant city managers, or there were two assistant city managers, who both had already announced their plans for retirement, and my only plea when I was offered the position was to ensure that they would do so not yet, and that they would do so separate from one another. And of course, as they have always done professionally, both have committed to that and have honored that as well. And both Brian and Sherman have offered me something that most city managers don't get the great fortune of, which is time. They literally keep the trains running on time in this city and have allowed me to actually figure out what this city is and to help kind of help you all chart a path forward as we go forward. Hands down, Brian is the, the best project manager that I've ever had the benefit of working with. There is nothing that goes missing as he goes about what it is that he does, and so, very, certainly very thankful for that. I too will miss the, the Brian sayings and the Brianisms, most of which we can't actually say here in public, but will miss those around the office as well, and certainly know that he will enjoy his retirement and certainly wish him the, the best as well. So, just wanted to thank, thank you, Brian, for what you have done and for all that you have done for the city, and hopefully we have sufficiently embarrassed him today as well, so thank you.
Here, here.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Stand up, the camera's out there somewhere. Can you just stand up? We can take a look at you.
Really embarrassing, please.
So, okay.
There you go.
All right.
You ought to have a, a response time, you know.
Exactly.
Have some rebuttal.
I do have a question. I want to know the first thing you're going to do in retirement.
We already know.
Mr. Best Bitch knows well what the first thing I'm going to do in my retirement, and it involves a, something with a red wax top on it, Mr. Best Bitch, correct? Thank you all for your comments today, they're much appreciated. I have three numbers for you. I'm not a numbers guy, but I did a little research, and I have three numbers for you. First number is twenty-one.
Okay.
And that is the number of city council members that I've had the pleasure working with in my eighteen years here at the city of Roanoke. The second, second number is the number four, which is the number of mayors that I've worked with during my eighteen years here with the city. And then the last number I'll share is the number three, and that's the number of city managers that I've worked for during my time here, and thanks to Bob and Chris Morrell, but most importantly is thank you to Darling Bursham, who I have to say, really helped me become the public servant that I've been able to become, both in Norfolk and here, and I'll be ever thankful to her and her support and confidence in me. So, I wanted to say that, and thank you all. You still have a budget to adopt, and you have a rather lengthy public hearing meeting tonight at seven o'clock, which I will be here for, because I wouldn't miss that for the world, because it, it begins and ends with zoning approvals tonight, so those will be, so I won't stand up much longer, because you have a lot of work to do. Thank you all for your time. Thank you all for your support through the years, and yes, I do look forward to my retirement, because it's about finally some time for me as opposed to my career, so the time is right. Thank you all.
Hey, man.
All right, thank you, Brian. All right. All right, we now move to item number eleven. Oh, forgot to vote again. All right, let's vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Davis?
I think I have to say aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Reluctantly, aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Bitch?
Aye, 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 aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And thank you all, and it's a unanimous vote, and I know it would be, and the resolution passes, and thank you, Robert Brian Townsend, with his service to the city. All right, now, moving on, item number eleven is motion and miscellaneous business inquiries or no comments by the mayor and members of city council, and I would do this in alphabetical order. I think this time I'll start with you, Ms. Boyd. Any comments or miscellaneous items you'd like to bring before the council and the city?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to apologize to all of the residents in the city who have written emails or sent information to me. I, I did make an attempt to respond, and then I got overwhelmed. There were so many emails on so many different topics that I just could not keep up, but I do intend to respond. I just want to apologize to you publicly now for having been so late doing so, because I want you to realize that there were a ton. It's very unusual that we get as many that we've all gotten. But I would like to say, you know, there's been a lot of comments and a lot of remarks about defunding the police, and, and I just wanted to say that that means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. But I think what most of the people that I've spoken with are saying is that they really mean rebalancing or reallocating the budget or some funds, and, and I can understand that, and I can agree with that, and I think that's what people mean. And even listening to some of the comments that were made today, I think that's where people are going, and that's what they really mean. I personally think that law enforcement would embrace some of the ideas, because our police officers are, are cops, they're marriage counselors, they're coaches. The police officers have to do a lot of things, and we definitely want our streets to be safe, we want better neighborhoods, and I, what I think people want most of all is to put that money towards, say, for instance, actual counselors or redirect funds or say for instance, actual counselors or redirect funds or prioritizing at-risk populations, quality education, equitable economic development, and definitely taking a look at our DARE program and our resource officers. Take a look at redirecting some money toward affordable housing, chipping away at the income disparities and real community policing. I know that a lot of people have heard a lot about Camden, New Jersey. And I think it's because they did have a significant reduction in crime, 47%. And one of the things that I took away from, one of the things that they had done that I really like is that they required all of the police officers, when they come on, to go out into the community that they will be servicing and to introduce themselves and to give the person a card and say, hey, look, call me if you have any problems, call me if you have any questions, call me if you're doing a barbecue, I'd love to come, to establish those personal relationships. And that's what they mean by community policing. And I think that's what a lot of people are saying about reallocation. So there's a number of things that we can do as a community and to make our city safe. But I am ready for some real change and some real action. I think we're all tired of talking. And I am ready to see some real change and to make that change. So that's where I stand on that issue and I just wanted to make myself clear. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Ms. Osborne, I mean, Ms. Price.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Trish, because what you said really summarizes what I've been experiencing as well. That we have, I'm very appreciative of all the emails and phone calls and messages that our public has expressed. And I think every single one of us here at council comprehends and understands the gravity of this situation. I agree with Trish in saying that as far as that term, and I'll be honest with you, I don't like the term itself, defunding the police department. Because words do have meaning and consequences. And we do have to be cognizant of what it is we're doing. Do we need to make improvements and to make certain that the systemic racism that begins, that is a part unfortunately, of the fabric of our country? Do we need to face that? Absolutely. Without a doubt. And do we have some measures in place and some things that are going to be presented this afternoon to address those kinds of, the seriousness of this particular issue? Yes. But let me just say this. I think everyone knows that, you know, my background is education. Having been in Roanoke City Schools for 35 years and in Baltimore City Schools for five years. I know I sound like a broken record, but the school system cannot do this job alone. Racism is taught. It is not something that you're born with. When I was 12 years old, I'll never forget, a little girl, little white girl pointed at my little baby brother. The child couldn't have been more than five or six years old. She pointed at my baby brother, my sweet precious little baby brother, and used the N-word. I looked up at her father because I knew that child did not get that word in her vocabulary through osmosis. We have to be the change, as Gandhi said, we have to be the change that the world wants, that you want to see in the world. And we have the potential for generational change, to be the generational change agents. And it begins with our children. Roanoke City Schools just got a new superintendent. And, you know, you've heard me say in the past, my support for having SRO officers and DARE teachers in the schools. You've heard me say that 100 times. But that's not to say that I'm closed-minded to say, is there something else that needs to happen? Is there another path forward? I'm open to that. Because these are the kinds of things that we have to address across the institutions and across every department within our city. So having said that, I think it's important that we include Roanoke City Schools, our new superintendent, in these kinds of conversations. And I'll just close by saying another one of my favorite quotes by Frederick Douglass, "It is easier to build strong children than to repair broken men." These are generational issues that we have. And we have the opportunity to be change agents. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Osborne.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. And thank you, Ms. White Boyd and Ms. Price for your statements. And I appreciate Ms. White Boyd addressing the fact that we have gotten so much constituent comments, so many emails, so many people expressing themselves. And it delights me. I'm thrilled to hear our citizens' opinions, their ideas. I am thrilled when they participate in government because that's truly what it will take, is community participation to move this conversation and to move this issue forward. I too have not been able to respond to everyone and I hope that I will. I cannot guarantee that I will, but I will make every effort to try. I certainly read every email. I also appreciate Ms. Price's addressing the fact that racism is learned and that we really do need to consider how that is taught and then how to address it as adults and parents and educators and members of our community, how we engage in that conversation and how we help young people work through that learning and learn to be anti-racist individuals in our modern-day society. Regarding the language and concepts of defunding the police, I just wanted to offer this perspective, which has been my experience working alongside public safety for a large part of my career as a social worker in crisis services. I've worked with public safety people in the emergency department. I've worked inside of a jail. And the work that they are called to do is vast. It is challenging. And, I mean, I have seen officers, both sworn officers and deputies in jails, be called to work, to do the work that I have had years of academic training and clinical supervision to be able to do. And they are called upon to do that without any of that support. So I just want to make sure that we have a very well-rounded conversation about what it means to serve in the role of public safety, what we ask of those individuals and how we may adjust what we ask of them moving forward. I think it is a conversation well worth having. I think we as a city have a lot to think about and we have a lot to talk about. And I'm very, very proud of my fellow council members. I'm very proud to be able to serve with this group of individuals because we are very dedicated to this issue, both in our own personal lives and as we represent this city. And I'm really thankful for that. So I want the citizens of Roanoke to know that we are always open and listening to what you have to say. We are constantly thinking, digesting that information and seeing what we can do to improve the lives of all the residents in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne. Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. I am going to do precisely what I swore I wasn't going to do, which is speak off the cuff as opposed to reading a response, mainly because I actually spilled coffee all over my computer this morning and I don't have a response to read to you right now. But in speaking off the cuff, I do run the risk as a white female of saying the wrong thing. And that's really terrifying. And I'm saying this because I, this has been some incredible opportunity over the course of the past two to three weeks for us to engage in conversations that have never taken place before. And I, as a white female, have acknowledged my privilege and have had a lot of very pointed conversations with people who have called me out on what I've done in my time, either on council, my time at the Boys and Girls Club and in my roles as a leader in this community, where I have not either stood up, where I have not demanded better, where I have not done more. And when I ran for council four years ago, one of the first things I said was that as a white female, I've been told I'm not allowed to talk about race. And I've also been told that if I have to ask a question, that I'll never understand because I will never have lived it or experienced it. I'm glad that we now have the opportunity to have this conversation and that I can say to my fellow African-American council members that I'm really sorry, I know I will say the wrong thing, but it's not going to prevent me from speaking up. I have a lot of thoughts and I appreciate what's already been said. One of the things that I feel in my heart is that implicit bias and systemic racism cannot be undone or unwound if you are within the system that was created on that implicit bias and systemic racism. I think that it requires extreme disruption for people to think outside the box, for people to become creative. You can almost look at COVID as being an example. When people's resources were removed overnight, whether it was as a business owner, as the leader of a nonprofit, as a mom trying to teach your kids within your own home. When your resources were removed from you overnight, you became very creative really quickly. Because if you didn't become creative, then you were going to fail. And we have seen businesses who have failed. We have seen nonprofits that have failed. We've seen, I've failed as a mom many times in the course of COVID. But it required that we do things differently. And I do believe that there's a lot of power in reallocating or removing funding because it forces people to do and act and be different than when they were able to rely on that resource. I believe that people can be very, very good people with the best of intentions. And yet, having been brought up in a society that is based on implicit bias and that is built on systemic racism, that when faced in a moment of having to make a fight-or-flight-based decision, one that comes from your central nervous system, it does not come from your mind, it doesn't come from judgment. It comes from a moment where you are reacting, that you don't, as a human being, have the ability to, in that moment, overcome the implicit bias and overcome the systemic racism. Whether or not you know that it was there to begin with, you don't have a choice. A lot of people act based on that central nervous response. And so while I believe that people are good people and with the best intentions, I also believe that we have a lot of people in this country who have grown up in a system that when forced to make that response or to have a response, are going to have a response that may murder someone, that may use force or may create the opportunity for people to use force that they wouldn't have used if they had had the chance to make that decision. And that being said, I believe wholeheartedly that until we undo the systems in which our police officers are brought up in and trained in, in which we as city council members are brought up in and trained in, in which our administration, in which every aspect of our society is brought up in, then we are not going to be able to undo all of the areas of our lives that are creating what today is very explicit racism and explicit biases. I think that the Camden Police Department is an interesting example and I really appreciate that Trish brought that up already. I do think there's an opportunity to look at Camden and see what worked and what didn't work. One of the things in listening to the interviews of the police chief, the former police chief of Camden, who was a part of redesigning that system, one of the things that he said is that he wanted to invest in the community. He wanted to invest in things that were going to prevent people from falling into the criminal justice system to begin with. And I will say, one of the things he said off the cuff in an NPR interview was, "I would have taken 10 police officer salaries to have had one more Boys and Girls Club in Camden." We have to, as Ms. Price said, invest in our youth. We have to force ourselves to reallocate funding to mental health, to domestic violence, to drug abuse, to the things that don't require a police response. But until we are looking at these funding sources and we are considering, you know, I know nobody wants to give up funding, nobody wants to have a department that is under their leadership that they believe, you know, that they've done something wrong that they're going to remove funding from. But we have to, as leaders, look at what we can do to disrupt the current system. And just talking about it is not enough to disrupt it. I had an amazing conversation with our police chief earlier this week. I believe, I believe that he is representative of the police department and is representative of the citizens of the city and wants to do what is best. I also believe that it takes council as leaders in this situation to help make sure that we are putting our money where our mouth is and that we are prioritizing what we want to prioritize and not just say, there's not enough money for this or we have to go out and look for a grant to cover this. We have to build into our budget, our general operating budget, that our taxpayers pay into these resources that we're talking about here. We have a long meeting. I know I've talked for a long time and like I said, I promised I wouldn't go off the cuff and I did. But I believe that without some level of disruption, that we will not make a change. And that Roanoke could potentially be the next place, Roanoke City could be the next place on the map where somebody is murdered accidentally. But still, their life is taken from them because of something that occurred within our city that we didn't have the foresight to address. So I appreciate you all. This is a much longer conversation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor calls.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who's already spoken. I don't know that I have a lot to add, but I want to share a couple of things. I don't know if you all can see this, but this is a photograph. My dad died on May 29th. I flew out just before, during all of the COVID-19 activities to be with him prior to his death. Going through some of his things as we were cleaning out his apartment, I found this photograph of a friend of his, Eddie Towns. This picture was taken in 1939, 1940. This is my dad and Eddie Towns, a white boy, an African-American boy, who were best friends, who lived in Larned, Kansas, which is part of western Kansas. And my dad always talked about the challenges that he faced just being a friend with Eddie and his brother George. And one small example I will share is that in order for my dad to eat lunch with Eddie, he couldn't eat in the front part of the cafe. He had to eat in the alley behind. Dad could eat by himself in the cafe, but not with Eddie. He had to go in the alley. One of the things my dad taught me is the... is the, excuse me, is the importance of relationship. We cannot change behaviors. We cannot create meaningful actions that will bring about the change that we need if we are not in relationship with each other. Posture of division, of shaming, of saying that someone is more than or less than will not get us where we need to go. The only way we will get there is to be in and stay in relationship and keep showing up to be present with each other. I think you can see and hear in my voice that my grief is real, that the level of loss and grief in our nation, in our city, in our land is real. And it is showing up in every way imaginable. It's showing up in our bodies and in our body, in our shouts, in our protests. It's being released in ways that we have some control over and ways we have no control over. And as Michelle said, we want answers, we want changes, we want wisdom, we want wholeness, we want disruption, and we want it now. Part of our struggle is that trust has been broken. Our relationships are fractured. We're all feeling raw and wounded and cannot even adequately describe, nor should we have to, what we are grieving. What has been taken away, what has been lost, what can never be recovered. I think it's critical that we have honest and deep conversations now and in the months to come to understand what it means to be safe, to feel safe. All of us have so many different perspectives on what that means and what that can look like. We need to understand the impact of force. Not only physical force, but verbal force. We need to understand who's impacted and why. What practices need to be changed or ended and why. We need to ask ourselves why, when over the course of at least the last couple decades, we have asked our police and our first responders to do more and more regarding mental health, addiction, homelessness, truancy. And, and the list is even longer than that. We need to ask, we have asked our police and first responders to do more, and now we want them to do less. If we are truly prepared as a community to accept responsibility for those things that we have asked them to do, that we now believe we should do. We need to return community to the center of community in resolving the very issues that we far too often pass off to other people who are not adequately trained, who are not prepared, who do the best they can. I think we also need to create and facilitate a neighborhood-based community trust survey, and I know some people will say, "We're surveyed out." This, for me, is very different. This can help us create a scorecard on how our community, how our police, how our first responders, how our mental health practitioners, you just named the category, are doing in building relationships that restore trust rather than deteriorate trust. We need to bring together neighbors, community stakeholders and partners, police, first responders, in redefining what community safety looks like, feels like, lives like, and acts like. But we also need to talk with our neighboring towns and cities and counties. Because as much as we want Roanoke to be a safe place for everyone to thrive, it can't be an island. People move to this region of southwest Virginia for a reason. It's absolutely beautiful. And the majority of our people are amazing and phenomenal. How can we tap into that? As I said before, my dad taught me that the only way we can truly change is through relationship, through honoring each other, through valuing our unique voices and perspectives, but understanding that we all have very different perspectives on what it is that keeps us safe, what it is that shapes meaningful community, and what it is that can bring forth a transformative strategy and practice that will truly make our city healthy and whole. I wanna thank you all who have reached out to offer your support and encouragement. This grief is real. We're all living in it right now. And we all need each other to work together to bring forth our better natures, to create and find solutions that will truly make a difference and make us stronger. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Now I'll go to Councilman Best Pitch.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, what started out as a rally to affirm that Black Lives Matter and a march to protest police brutality over the last couple of weeks has turned into demands to defund the police, demands to delay adoption of our annual budget calls to get rid of school resource officers, get rid of the DARE program. And I'm convinced that all of this is happening because people are responding not just to police brutality, they're responding to the other pandemic that either they have experienced themselves or they have come to recognize. And that's the pandemic of racism that has infected our country for now 400 years. And it is like the coronavirus, you know, you, you can't see the virus without a microscope, but you can see what it does to people, you can see what happens when people get ill. You can't really see racism. You can see what people do, you can see how they act. You can see when a white police officer, whose name I won't even say, can kneel for almost nine full minutes on the neck of George Floyd, whose name we all should say, we see the effects of racism. We see what racism can cause somebody to do in broad daylight, casually, even though it was obvious that video cameras were recording the entire scene. So I agree with what all of you have said, what all of you have shared, and I think it's time for a microscopic inspection and review of all the systemic and institutional racist policies and practices that some of us have been privileged to ignore, not even realizing that they're here or how they may affect other people's lives. You know, I, I recently saw a news clip of one of the marches showing a little girl, no more than four or five years old, raising her fist and chanting along with the crowd, "No justice, no peace." And then she looked directly into the camera and she raised her fist a little higher and shook it a little harder. No justice, no peace. And I thought to myself, that little girl deserves to grow up in a society where she feels like she can feel the peace that comes from knowing that she can depend upon justice, just like the people who don't look like her. She needs to know that she will find equity and empowerment that allow her to enjoy all the rights and privileges that come, or are supposed to come, with being an American. You know, last year when we began the process of, of revising and updating our comprehensive plan, I was really happy to see that a new theme had been added for the first time, a theme of interwoven equity. For each of the other five themes, we have people and activities in place to advance the priorities, policies, and actions developed in City Plan 2040. We do not have staff or activities to implement a specific program to ensure that interwoven equity is more than a concept in a document that sits on a shelf somewhere collecting dust. So, Mr. Mayor, I move that this council direct the city attorney to draft the necessary ordinance to establish an Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board as a permanent council-appointed body consisting of seven citizens of the city of Roanoke and two members of Roanoke City Council. The purpose of the board shall be to review the priorities for interwoven equity in City Plan 2040, develop proposed implementation plans for the policies and actions identified for each priority, review all existing city policies and regulations, and recommend to council changes that are necessary to rid the institution of policies and procedures that promote inequity and limit empowerment. The board shall develop bylaws, schedule regular meetings monthly, and hold public hearings to receive community input at least quarterly. I so move.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes.
Uh, yes, I, I, Trish White Boyd, I am, I am in agreement with Mr. Best Pitch. This pain is real, the grief is real, and I will second his motion.
All right. Any comments on that? You gotta make any comment before we take action on that motion. All right. Let me say that it is a thing that's needed. I think it will really give us an opportunity to, to engage publicly, to know what's going on, what we need to do, and I think that's a, that will be something that will aid us as we go forward. So with that being said, do I need a roll call on this, or can I just, uh, can we just go with yea or nay?
A roll call, we'll do a roll call on this.
All right. All right, if you would, call low on the, uh, motion for the Equity Committee.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborn?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Ms. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye.
And the motion approved. Thank you, Ms. Best Pitch.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I might, one, one last thing, I know, uh, Mr. Callahan read some emails and, and some of them had to do with the, uh, uh, removal of the monument in Lee Plaza, and I wonder if he could just take maybe 60 seconds to update us on where things stand in terms of the legislation that was passed by the General Assembly uh, earlier this year and, and what the options are going forward.
True, I'll give him an opportunity to say that, but let me comment on what we were, uh, during the discussion we just had with regards to our community and what is happening, uh, throughout this country. And as I've said, I'm not gonna be redundant, I think everybody and everything that was said was wrong, Paul, and he says this, as a young person who grew up in the middle and late 60s, who could not go to certain schools, you know, I was, until the fifth grade, I was locked into, because of my county and, and because of, uh, Virginia being one of the states that refused to integrate pretty long than a lot of other states, we couldn't go to school until, uh, to integrate, integrated school until, in the early, middle part of the 60s. But to see that, and it became routine, that you saw the signs that said, uh, colored and white, and I, I would, I would, when I saw the picture of Vice Mayor Cobb's father there, it reminded me of that time when it was relationships, when we, as young people, associated with the kids that live over on the farm or lived around, because I admire the rural area, but we got together, we played ball together, we had sports together, and we didn't think about the issues that, that, well, you, you just, we just accepted it. You're not supposed to go here, you can't go there, when you get on the bus, you gotta go back to the back. Uh, when you go in the store, you can't touch anything. Uh, my mother was very strict about that, when you went to the movies theater, you had to, we had to, as a race, go upstairs. We couldn't go downstairs, where you had a front view of, of theater. And then even in, in sports and going to certain colleges, we couldn't go to college, to some of the bigger schools now, unless you were the best athlete, unless you could dunk the ball from half court or run a touchdown every time you touched it. You couldn't go there, uh, whether you were, or you had to be a straight A student. So things have changed, gotten better, but there's still a lot of pain, a lot of frustration, and, and it was just, what happened as a result of Mr. Flor's death, it just brought that out, and people just were saying, "Enough is enough, we're tired of that." And I think it's, it's time to go forward, and what really, and what really made me feel different about this protest, as others have, is that the diversity, the diversity that's in there, this is not a, just a black protest. We know that Black Lives Matters, but I'm seeing young, young white students and children holding signs saying, "Black Lives Matter." They're involved in this, and I mean, I think that's, that's, so I think, uh, this is a movement that we've got to be prepared for, to go forward, and again, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, is relationship, we gotta develop a relationship, and again, Roanoke is just not on an island, we gotta bring our brothers. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to speak at a church in Salem to talk about that, and, uh, and they were pleased that I came, and I was pleased to have been there, but I told them, "We're gonna have to extend a hand, we're gonna have to extend a hand to each other, and we're gonna have to continue to talk about and talk to people that are not like us." And so, uh, I, I feel all those things that have been said. And let me say, as we prepare later on to go and, and, and talk about the budget, and, and we, you know, words like "defund" or reform, which some people don't wanna say, we've gotta take a look at that. You know, one of the things that I've been asking is, because we're in a unique situation, where we're getting a new police chief, whom I know well, and a new superintendent and right at the same time, and I've always just said, "Let's make sure they're at the table." They're at the table, because they can have some input, and I think we can talk a little bit about, uh, resource officers, uh, but they're more than just pepper spraying. There are some things that, there are some reasons we put those there, we just didn't have, have to say, "Oh, we got a lot of money, we can just put these off." There are reasons we put that, put those people there, and we need to talk about that, so I'm for going forward, we all are, but I just wanna make sure we have those key people, and especially the chief. I'm for going forward, we all are, but I just want to make sure we have those key people, and especially the chief and the superintendent who has here today and to look at that and assess that. And then as we move forward, because we as a council just didn't make those decisions off the cuff. We hadn't made them for the, because there were some very real issues that we had to deal with. So I look forward to moving forward, to going forward, and to make sure we will lead that city with that star that shines bright on here, that we can continue to be that all-American city, and we can lead by example. And I'm so pleased that we're not a Minneapolis or those other cities. We're doing some things. We've had our issues, but overall, Roanoke, I feel has, is a city that's compassionate, that's willing to work with each other. I think we, we get along well. I think relationships are well. They can be improved on, but I, I'm just pleased. As a matter of fact, that's why we got those awards out in Denver is because we come together. We have people, not only as an organization or a program, but the people and how they, how we came together and put things in perspective. And I so, we'll continue to do this. So I'm encouraged. I'm encouraged by what our city can do and will do. So with that being said, I will ask Mr. Callahan if he will come to the podium and share with us those issues that were put before. Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, members of council. General Assembly passed Chapter 1101 earlier this year that allows localities the the authority to remove monuments and statues from publicly owned property. The process is one that, the statute becomes effective July 1. The intent of, you need to adopt a resolution expressing your intent to remove a monument from city property. City staff plans to present that measure to you on July 6. Assuming that that measure passes, that measure will direct city administration to advertise your notice of intent and advertise a public hearing. The public, the statute requires a thirty, at least a thirty day notice before the public hearing can occur. We would plan to advertise on July 13 for a public hearing on August 16. Assuming the council were to adopt an ordinance to remove the monument from Lee Plaza, the statute requires that for thirty days, you offer the monument to museums, heroic societies, governments, or battlefields that may be interested. At the end of that thirty day period, council's determination is exclusive and final that how you want to remove and dispose and transfer that monument. So our plan would be that the public hearing would occur on the evening of August 16 or at a later date as determined by city administration and council, and then you would have the opportunity to act on that, and then we'd follow that process if you did adopt an ordinance removing the Lee monument from Lee Plaza.
All right, thank you. Does anybody got any questions regarding yet? All right, thank you, Mr. Callahan. All right. We're now down to item 11B, which is vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council. And we've been informed of the two appointments that we made from the, from the floor. And, and are those, are those the appointments to our GRTC board?
Mr. Mayor, I think that we have an appointment to the Hotel Roanoke Conference Center Commission and also to Virginia's First Regional Industrial Facilities Authority.
Do you have those? Okay.
The first nomination would be to appoint Robert S. Cal, Jr. to fill the unexpired term of R. Brian Townsend as a city employee representative to the Hotel Roanoke Conference Center Commission, ending April 12, 2021. And secondly, to appoint Robert Ledger to fill the unexpired term of R. Brian Townsend as city representative to the Virginia's First Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, ending June 30, 2022. Those are the two nominations, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Madam Clerk, I'd like for you to call a roll, and on that, if everybody's in agreement with those two, with those names, will you please let it be known by the voting of all nominees? Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Ms. Davis?
All nominees.
Ms. Osborn?
All nominees.
Ms. Price?
All nominees.
Ms. White Boyd?
All nominees.
Ms. Best Pitch?
All nominees.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
All nominees.
And Mayor Lee?
All nominees. Thank you. All right, can we take a five-minute break?
I think that's a good idea, Mr. Mayor.
Well, let's take a five-minute break and we'll come back.
Mr. Mayor, hold on. Before you do that, I think it's important to update people on where we are right now. Some people are very concerned because we went very quickly from having a passionate discussion to it moved into Lee Plaza and why we weren't taking action on Lee Plaza today. And now it's moved into, and I know if you have a copy of the agenda in front of you, it makes sense, but I do think it's important for people to know that we are getting ready to talk about the budget specifically as soon as we come back from this break.
Well, you've just advised them of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Davis, we'll do that. Thank you. Let me just share with you this, a purpose for what we're doing. This afternoon, City Council will be considering the following items for action in connection with the city's recommended 2021, 2020, 2021 fiscal year budget effective July 1, 2020, along with other related items. Council conducted public hearings on May 28, 2020, to receive public comments regarding the recommended FY 2020, 2021 budget. Proposed tax increase on real estate and recommended 2020, 2021 HUD funds budget. The public hearings were opened and closed that evening. All right, item number 12A is now is a consideration to adopt the recommended FY 2020, 2021 budget and other related items. Item number one. Did I hear something? What's on? I thought I heard something. All right, item number one is a certificate of the Director of Finance advising that funds required for the 2020, 2021 general fund, stormwater utility fund, civic facilities fund, parking fund, risk management fund, school general fund, school food budgets will be available for appropriation subject to the adoption of the revenue measures proposed by the city manager in the June 15, 2020, City Council Agenda. And no action is necessary on this, and so without objection by the council, communication will be, this communication will be received and filed. Item number two is reaffirm, reaffirmation of real estate tax rate. There is an ordinance.
Go ahead, the ordinance.
Trish White Boyd, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance adopting and reaffirming the real property tax rate as set forth in Article 2 of Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Roanoke and dispensing with second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Ms. Osborn?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the vote is unanimous and the ordinance passes. Thank you.
Item number three, the adoption of the annual general stormwater utility facilities, parking, risk management, school general, school food services, and grant fund appropriation for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2020, 2021. There is a budget ordinance. Need a motion?
Move the budget ordinance.
Ms. Osborne, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
Adopting the annual general stormwater utility, civic facilities, parking, risk management, school general, and school fund services appropriations of the City of Roanoke for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021 and dispensing with second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments by members of council? Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. I think this is the appropriate time for us to have a conversation. I'd like to ask for Mr. Callahan's potential assistance as well. Mayor Lee, we, I, I talked to you prior to today's meeting and told you, you know, I didn't have, I don't have any man on delay to vote on the budget. It is important, and this is the same thing that I've sent to anybody who's emailed me, that we pass a budget. And Mr. Callahan, I think too, one of the things I'd like to discuss right now is the fact that we don't have an opportunity. If we didn't have a budget as a city, not only do we, are we required to have a balanced budget, first of all, but if we didn't have a budget as a city, then city services would, would cease to exist. And so delaying the entire budget, we have had a lot of people who have called in or who have emailed and have requested that we delay the vote today. What I'd like to talk about right now is what other alternatives we have other than delaying a vote on the entire budget. I'd like to talk about what alternatives we may have to create a set process, a set requirement for review of some of the funding that people are requesting that we review without a delay in the entire budget. I think it's important that we know what the opportunities are and what the options are as council members to look at and to review specific departmental budgets. And Bob, I know that we have never, we, we as city council members are, we try hard not to get in the weeds. We try hard to let administration do this work, and you all have done a phenomenal job. But I do think that it is important for us to listen to constituents and to hear their concerns and not just dismiss them and say that this is how city government works and has worked and has to work. But what, there are options, and we must have options, and I'm, I'm questioning now what those options are.
I, I guess I give two answers, one tied to the FY 21 budget, the other obviously to the FY 22 budget. Obviously, as you all know, that this budget that you're voting on today is the result of literally, in this case, a year's worth of work. You started this process in July of last year. Normally, this would have been adopted a couple of months ago because of our normal schedule. Obviously, it was delayed because of the, the response associated with COVID and our efforts to try to make sure that we knew as much as we could regarding revenues. As you've heard us say before through all the briefings, we don't know if the FY 21 budget that you're approving is actually going to be ending up what we end up implementing. And the reason being for that is because we don't know if the revenues actually projected will be received. We certainly hope that will be the case. But you all will remember, we've even set aside in the budget proposal, we have set aside some funds to actually cover in the event that those revenues come in less. So I say all that as a way of background to say that, you know, we will be monitoring with you all, unlike any other year in recent times, the budget on a monthly basis. And it certainly may be necessary as we go along to amend the, the budget for those reasons. Certainly, there, there can still be conversations, obviously regarding, should be conversations regarding your priorities as well as funding. I, I will argue that those have taken place for FY 21, and I do not, I do not consider it dismissive to say that those conversations have occurred and that the conversations you're talking about really are those that are necessary to formulate the policies, the priorities and the fundings for FY 22. And again, as I just mentioned, that process for FY 21 started in July. That process for FY 22 starts in July. So this isn't something we're saying nine months from now, you all should get together and start talking about priorities going forward. It will actually be next month that you'll need to be getting together and start talking about the priorities as we go forward. And certainly, these things that you're discussing and that have come up, as are any of the other expenses that the city has, and any of the priorities are certainly subject to that, that conversation. As a matter of fact, we welcome that conversation. That's the purpose of those retreats that we have every year is to have that, that piece of it. There is a process to go through to amend the current budget after it is adopted, and we go again, we may end up having to do that anyway because of revenues. And it varies depending on what the amendments are that are associated with it. And, and so I can't really answer that until I would know what it is that the amendments that might be considered so that we can give you the, the correct direction as to how those amendments would be considered. You know, some, some amendments are simply administrative. Some amendments require, coming back here, just as we did a deappropriation of some funding that we had earlier, and, and some amendments actually require yet another process as we go through. So it really depends on what it is ultimately that you're, as a council, that you're talking about. Yeah, so hopefully that answers a piece of it, but I mean, you're really, you know, you're really bridging two, with this, two budget years, obviously, because we're at the end of our 20 budget, approving the 21 budget and beginning the work of the 22 budget. So that just comes together at this time of year as we go, as we go forward in normal circumstances.
Thank you, Bob. And I think to follow up with that question, you know, what we're talking about here is if we pass, I mean, we're talking about an almost $300 million budget, excuse me. And so I think that what we need to really talk about with, with regards to the specific amount that's been allocated to the police department, which is what people are asking us to look into further. And what I want to add to that is, for me, it's not about the money that's being given to the police department. My question is that we are talking about funding or finding or sourcing all of these other opportunities, creating more mental health supports, creating the potential of a public safety and unarmed public safety department that would be able to handle things that really our police should not be forced to handle. This is not their purview. This is something that has fallen on them. Joe, I think you mentioned you've talked with Rick Morrison, for example, and the amount of work that our police department are expected to do nowadays is significantly, the scope has just expanded so broadly. And Bob, my concern is that we pass this budget today. We all sit here and say, we want more funding for X, Y, and Z, and yet every single one of us knows we are in a recession and that the only way any other money is going to be found to go to these other places is if it is removed from somebody else's budget. And nobody wants to talk about what kind of hardship that creates because it, it creates controversy. We're talking about something that is really, really difficult. But if we all believe in trying to create other avenues for creating a genuine sense of public safety for all of our citizens, and that includes helping to prevent domestic violence, helping to make sure that our youth have the opportunities that they need to be successful and productive citizens, trying to make sure that we have mental health support, making sure that we have some work for folks who are facing for folks who are facing drug addiction. If we are going to fund those other priority areas right now, if we pass this budget today, the only way that's going to happen is if we all agree that we are going to take a hard look at where that money must come out of in order to fund the other areas. And I'm not willing to pass the budget today without knowing that we're going to have a further, or I'm not willing to personally vote yes on passing the budget unless I have a specific guidance and clear understanding of what we're going to do as council moving forward to talk about where the money comes from, to create these other areas and priority and needs that our citizens honestly have been talking out about for a really long time. We have had people coming into our council chambers and talking about defunding the jail for months now. This isn't the first time we're hearing a lot of this. And yes, more people feel outspoken because of George Floyd's death, and I understand that. But it would be dismissive of us to say, we're going to keep talking about how, how, how we create all these other avenues of personal protection for people and create the sense of public safety, but we don't put money behind it. There has to be money there in order for those changes to be made. And I want to know, if we pass this budget today, what's the next step to having these funding conversations? Not defunding, yes, money gets pulled from somewhere, but if we are going to fund these other areas, how do we have that conversation? And how does it get done prior to FY twenty-two?
Councilmember Davis, that, that's...
Let me say this, Bob, Ms. Davis, we, I'm not sure now is the time to do that. We've talked about that. All of us have made comments, I know I have, to the media and to citizens, that we're going to do that. But to hear, to, to, what you're almost implying is though we're just giving words, just saying words to our constituents. You understand what's the problem that we're facing. We understand the decisions that we have to make. But what you're almost wanting the city to, is to dissect the thing that we've talked about in going forward. I mean, we've made those, we've made the statement, we've promised our citizens, we're going to do that. We're going to look at that. Those were just not vain words, but right here, we're trying to adopt this budget, which I ask each and every one of you. And we're okay with the budget. We're going to adopt the budget, recognizing that there are going to be some things that we definitely have to look at. But to, to, the assertion you're making is that we, we don't know and we possibly could not be able to do that. And I'm just saying, at this minute, and this is my sixteenth budget, at this stage of the game, I don't understand why you're stopping the process and saying, okay, let's make an additional promise. Because that's all we can do right now, is saying that we're going to, we're going to do that. And I think is every council, every council person has the intentions of fully doing that because we've all made those promises to our constituents out here. I'm just taken back by how, at this point, you, you want to go that route and really get into the weeds on this thing. All right, that's, that's all. Bob, you may want to respond.
No, I will defer to you all for further comment. And then at the end, if you have any questions or need additional information, I certainly will provide it.
Mayor Lee, with all due respect, trying to ask how we take steps to fund the things that we've talked about, it is not, on the discussions that we've had up to this point. I'm asking for clear and transparent steps moving forward of how we actually do the things that we've been talking about doing. And I want to know that prior to voting on this budget. You've got several other councilmembers that seem to, that want to speak, Mayor Lee.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just if I could just answer, I guess, a preliminary question that I want to get it right, that we, the... But one thing, just by way of background, you will start as, and I think it may have been lost, you're going to start the prep for the next budget in July of 2020, in a month. That will, of course, require you to look at the budget you may adopt today, that you should adopt today. That's how your budget process has been. If you want to talk about revenue sources and priorities, that will be part of the discussion. And it will be informed as we go forward, looking at exactly what the realities are. How much revenue is being cut because of COVID from the state, from the feds, taxes here in the city that are down? Those are the issues that we need to be able to look at and, and, and under, understand in that context. So there is a process, and it will be your process. And your process will dictate how that budget review, budget development will occur. So everyone watching today will understand that that is the process. I would point at one of, and remember, Davis has hit on an important point, and that is with regard to, if you're not going to take it from other programs, then you need revenue. You just voted on the property tax. And may recall that one of the citizens, one of the nine citizens who spoke at the public hearings back on May twenty-eighth specifically raised the issue of raising property taxes. What you voted on was keeping the tax rate at $1.22. Why did we have to go through a public hearing and do that? Because assessed values increased by more than 1%, and General Assembly told us we had to do that. We all, so that's why we did it. So yes, even the appearance of raising taxes because assessments went up, so people will be paying more taxes, but the tax rate remains the same, is something that'll be looked at and discussed with regard to, as, as we're proceeding forward with this process. Lastly, because of a couple of questions, and this may educate folks, and it's not only because you made cuts, but because your budget was informed with regard to COVID-19 as the new budget was developed. In May of nineteen, your adopted budget appropriated $22,766,026 to the police department. The budget before you today for fiscal twenty-one appropriates $22,780,408, approximately $14,000 more. I think that that's part of the discussion. I don't, and depending on what you want to do and with the budget that you would pass today, that as Bob said, it may, depending on what you do, you may require public hearings, there may be other things, other requirements under state code. So it would be not prudent to set forth a concrete path other than you commit to using the budget preparation process that begins in July of 2020 to review these issues. And your work sessions are open in the morning, you do them in council, and I'm sure that that will be a participation. But I thought that may be of some help. But I caution about trying to set a process without knowing what we need to do with, with state law. I guess the last, I'll leave it at that. If there are questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Price?
Yes. I do want to make a quick comment, and I've wanted to just say that I appreciate the, the issue that Ms. Davis brought, brings up because, and I don't want to put words in her mouth, but I think it is very important that out of respect to our constituents, and because we have heard from so many people, and there are genuine concerns about how we go about our budgeting process and how monies are utilized and where they come from, where the revenue comes from. So I think it was important to hear from both the city manager and from the city attorney, what is the process before us so that we, as a, as a council body, but also the residents can hear, here are some, some choices that can be made. We have a process in, in beginning our budget processes starting next month. And I think it's very important for people to hear that. So thank you.
I don't have any issue with that, Ms. Price. The question is, there are so many unknowns right now because of COVID-19 and where we're going. I just did not feel that now was the appropriate time to, as I say again, to get in the weeds on, because there are a lot of unknowns. We've been here before. We know that. This could change. Whatever we say could change, and I don't want to toss into a situation that could very easily change at this point in time. That was my statement. Not the fact that we're not hiding anything. All of us have got a little... Matter of fact, I probably doubled the emails you have on that. But I'm just saying, we want to do that. We've been sharing with our citizens that we're going to do that. We're going to look at it. But right now, there's a lot of factors that we do not know. So I'm saying tread lightly in that area. And that's what we're asking, and the city, our city administration is implying that, given where we are. That was my point.
Mr. Mayor, if I might... You know, it seems like we have a lot more people tuned in to the budget this year than we've had in my memory. And I haven't been around for quite as many budgets as you have, but I'm not, not too far off your number either. And I think this is a good opportunity for us to make sure that all these folks know and understand that we are certainly the most transparent, open local government body in this area, and probably one of the most open in the entire country in terms of having all of our conversations, starting with briefings at nine o'clock next month, and going through with our annual strategic planning process that's, that's very transparent, very open, if people want to know about it. If people want to know about our discussions starting in January every month, they can, if they can't watch the meeting, they can go on Facebook and pull up the video anytime that's convenient for them. All of the PowerPoint presentations that we receive are then put onto the city's website. So it's, it's all there. It's all available for people who want to follow it and want to make recommendations about, we should look at spending more money for this and less money for something else. I think at the same time, it's very important for people to understand that a number of things that we are able to do are with grant funds from some federal or state agency that are available for a specific purpose. So when we hear people say sometimes, well, why did you spend money on that? It would have been better to spend it on something else. That might be true. And it's also true that the money wasn't available to be spent on something else. It was available for a particular program or a particular activity or particular equipment. And if we don't do that, we don't get the money, period. The next thing I think people get confused about is the difference between the operating budget and capital plan. You know, we have a great rating on our, our credit rating, which allows us to borrow money at very favorable interest rates. And one of the reasons, there's a number of reasons that works. One of the reasons is when we say this is our capital fund, we don't start raiding into it to fund operating costs. If we started to do that, our credit rating would not remain where it is. And the last thing I want to say is, you know, we have had people come talk about defunding jail, defunding the police department. Let's just get rid of it. Let's just close the jail, get rid of all the police officers. And it, it does concern me. I'm not trying to say that every police officer in the city of Roanoke is perfect. I'm not trying to say nobody makes mistakes. We all make mistakes. Every single one of us has made mistakes. Every single person that works for the city in any department has made mistakes at some point. And the police department has saved lives. The police department has intervened in violent situations and kept them from getting much more violent. The police department has rescued, rescued people who were about to commit suicide and brought them back and helped them get connected to the therapies that they needed and so forth. And I don't want to go on and on, but the police department has done a lot of positive things for this community, and I don't think that should be ignored or forgotten. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I mean, Davis, you still have the floor.
Mayor Lee, with all due respect, I think Ms. White Boyd had wanted to speak, and I also saw that Mr. Cobb wanted to speak, so I prefer to defer to them at this point.
All right, Ms. White Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Davis. I just want to say that, that I appreciate what Mr. Callahan said. I also appreciate what you said, Mr. Mayor, and what Mr. Bestbitch said. I think that we all are saying the same thing, that we do want to, to see some things changed and perhaps, you know, figure out a way to do some reallocations. But what I'm summarizing from all of these discussions is that there are a lot of variables anyway in our revenue stream, and that we might have to take another look at some of these, some of these categories anyway, because there might not be the funding that we anticipate because of our shortfall in revenue. So I think that we will have an opportunity. I looked at the briefing from this last budget, and there are numerous opportunities for the, for the community to engage. And I think that, with all due respect, that they will have those same opportunities, if I'm understanding correctly, beginning next month when we start our, our 2021 briefings. And we will have to discuss all of those, all of the funding, because if we fall short for some reason, we're going to have to, to continue those discussions. But I think it's fair to say that we do want our constituents to know that we are, we are looking at some ways to do some things differently as far as reallocations, not defunding the police department. But I think, like I said earlier when I made that statement, that I don't think people really mean defund. I think what they mean is to look at ways to enhance, you know, and prioritize some of these inequities and some of these disparities that we are experiencing. So I think we're, we're all in agreement that we will take another look when the opportunity arises, and that adopting the budget today is not saying that it is final, because this is an ongoing thing that we have to continue to reevaluate. And if I'm mistaken, I would like for someone to correct me, but that is my understanding that this is going to be an ongoing process contingent on the revenue that we're actually going to be receiving. Is that not correct?
Yes, from my opinion, that's correct, though.
Yeah, that is a part of it. I don't want that to be the, that is the reason why you will see every month going into the fiscal, the new fiscal year, briefings that you have not previously seen before, because generally, we're not having to come back to each month and talk about how we're doing on revenues because of what we're anticipating being the challenges associated still with recovery from, from COVID. So certainly that, but that's the reason it's coming back. The reason it's not coming back so that we can reprioritize what's in the FY twenty-one budget except for what is being driven by possible revenue losses. If there is a desire to reprioritize expenditures, I will ask you the same question that I ask you every July in the retreat, which is what are your priorities? And in the three years I've been here, the answer to that question has been education number one, community safety number two. That was true this year, that was true the year before, and all the way going back. That, that is the same question we will ask of you when we go into that July retreat. To mention, you mentioned previously, I think, councilmember Davis mentioned this, is the, most of the information you have had presented to you via emails here recently relative to SROs, DARE officers, the jail and other kinds of things, there have been groups standing here in front of you all through the last year presenting that exact same information. Every one of you continued on the same path that we are on right now. So if there is a desire to change the priorities, then we do that within the system that we have established, which is, in July, we begin the process of asking again, what are the priorities and how will we want to fund those? Now, I will set aside schools, because as you all know, of course, schools will most likely always be your top priority because of the funding formula that you have in place. So that formula ensures that more money goes to education than any other category that you have. And I would not anticipate that that would necessarily change as you go forward. The reduction in funding associated with that is because of what the formula's performance is based off of. The reduction of funding associated with that is because of what the formula's performance is based off of tax revenue, not, I presume, because of any change in your priorities. But absolutely, in July, that same question will be asked of you, and I suspect, based on what I hear from, from each of you, that that question will be met with a different answer than it has been every year prior. When I ask that question of priorities, I suspect I will hear different priorities um that will be coming forward, and then it is our job with you to identify how will we pay for those priorities. Councilmember Davis is absolutely correct that there is a, basically a finite bucket. In this case, unfortunately, the bucket is leaking as well because of the, the reduction in revenues coming from COVID. But it isn't a matter of, I mean, it really is a matter of if you're going to reprioritize in whatever year it is, that you either, you have two choices. You either reallocate funding from one area or multiple areas to another, or you seek additional sources of revenue. Those, those are it. Those are your only, the only choices that exist. There, there are no other choices. Um, and those will be, again, I will discuss in your retreat, just like we do every, every year. Um, and, you know, I would hope that when we get into that discussion, we have, we have deeper discussions than the receipt of emails. But I hope that we actually look at the information that's being provided by the community, that information is being provided by your staff, information that you all may provide as well. That's the purpose of that process, so that you don't make a decision that is as significant as reallocating funding from wherever it may be, um, until you have fully thought out what the, um, both benefits and consequences of doing that might be.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, the budget process with any organization, with local government, with households is organic. It's, it's, it's a process that we all go through on a small scale and a large scale. And alongside the development of that process is a fluidity that asks for, uh, what are our priorities? And they may change, um, they may stay the same. Uh, what are our processes of evaluation? And we have an extraordinary budget and management office. Amelia leads an incredible team that does extraordinary work to get us to this point every year. I am thrilled that we have citizens that are so passionate about the budget right now that they want to have input. It's not about stopping the process, but it is about examining and inviting people, our citizens. We have seven priorities in this city that we have identified, not only in conversation with each other and city staff, but also with citizens. I would invite all of our citizens who care about this process to look at those priorities. Look at the city council's strategic plan. Let us know what you're thinking, what your thoughts are. If, if, if the challenge is to reallocate something, the greater challenge is, as everyone has said here, from where to where? How do we go about that? How does that show up in our priorities? Um, citizens have said over and over again, not just us, that education and community safety are our top two priorities. So as I said earlier, I think our perspective of what that looks like is different. And I think we need to have those conversations, and I think all of us are committed to having those conversations, um, not just through email, but over the phone, in person as we can, uh, prior to the beginning of and the continuation of our process. I really urge everyone to be engaged in that, because then all of us have a deeper understanding of how that process works. Now, i- if, if somebody is particularly interested about a particular area, then I think we can look at, okay, how do we evaluate that area? What is, what are the review processes that we have in place to analyze that? What's the data that we have? What's the evidence that we have that something's working or not working? And what we'll discover is that all of our priorities are interrelated. All of them are absolutely interrelated, and they're interconnected. And so it's not just a matter of saying, I want to take this and put it over here. We have to look at the interrelatedness of it and the interconnection, and, 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 and that includes funding. So um, I think we have to move forward with this process. It's an organic process. But I think uh the call is, is for people who care about this, that live in our city, um, to engage with us and with each other on um what, what are our priorities? Uh, what would shifting them look like? Uh, what would evaluating them look like? Um, and then we can bring that as, as your leadership um to bear. And uh, we can address that in our conversations, in our, and in our decisions, and in how to allocate, and, and. It's all part of that ongoing process. We do it at home. We do it in our businesses. We do it in our nonprofits. We do it in local government. None of us are immune from that. We all live within that reality. And um, we all have processes that we have set up to follow um to keep us moving forward. And so thank you, Mayor, for letting me uh elaborate a little bit on that, and thank you, Councilwoman Davis, for bringing that up.
All right, Ms. Davis.
Uh, Mayor Lee, I, Juna still has something to say as well. Um, I think if, we should probably, if you don't mind, give her a chance to speak, and then I do have one more kind of wrap-up comment, uh, if you don't mind.
Ms. Osborne.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Um, uh, thank you, Michelle, for your courage and for disrupting this conversation today. I think it's important. Um, and I would like to know, um, to have a better idea of what you're asking for, and if that is different than what um Bob talked about in terms of us starting to work on the budget in July and establish our priorities. So if you could just tell me what, what you were thinking of and what, what's on your mind.
Thanks, Juna. Um, so my specific question, you know, I, and Mayor Lee, as I mentioned, you know, you and I spoke on the phone, and I told you I'm not, I don't have any plans on requesting a delay on voting on today's budget. We have to keep our city running, and this has been a year-long process. It's been a year-long process for which many of us have brand-new information that we did not use with which to evaluate our budget and our priorities up until about three weeks ago. And so what I, my question, my direct question was, if we pass the budget today, um, and it, and it does fund our city moving forward, understanding that there is constant conversation, because the tax revenue is never exactly what we think it's gonna be. This is really why we're in place, is to increase, increase based on the trends that we see throughout the year. And again, thank God for Amelia and her team for being there to keep an eye on this. My question is, if we decide as council that we want to appropriate funding to another resource, what is the process for us doing that in the middle of the year? If we determine as a city that we have a need that is not budgeted, it could come up at any point in time. It's not just about the fact that it's happening right now. If this had happened six months ago, and we needed immediate funding for something that was not funded in our budget, what is the process for making that happen? Um, and I'll, I'll wrap up by saying this. Um, I, I apologize. I apologize to our city, because I feel like I personally, for the past four years, have talked about needing more resources for mental health, needing more resources for our kids and for youth development, needing ways to create a more just and equitable society within our city, needing ways to, to, to remove systemic racism from within not only government, but from within all of the areas of, of our city in which we operate on a daily basis. And yet, I, being within our system, didn't believe it was possible. And I really believed that the systems that are in place and the processes that are in place were the only option, and were the only systems and the only processes through which we were able to work. Since George Floyd's death, we have been shown by other municipalities across this city that there are other ways to address the issues that we all have talked about wanting to address, and yet have not made moves to actually put money behind, such as mental health, such as trying to find better solutions for domestic violence, trying to find new solutions um for folks who are addicted to drugs, not putting them behind bars. We do have other options, and I really believe that for me personally, and I won't speak for everyone, that being inside the system, I didn't see the alternatives until they were brought to my attention by the other municipalities across our country, and I'm really grateful for that. And I feel like I have done this community a disservice by not seeing those opportunities prior to a man dying under the knee of a police officer in Minneapolis. Um, I want to say that, Juna, you brought up last year, and I believe the year before that, that we need to have town halls. And I'm going to reiterate that right now. When we are talking about our budget process and we're talking about getting the public involved, we must, as a council, do something to make ourselves more available to the public. And when we talk about systemic racism and we talk about implicit bias in our processes, the ways that we meet do not allow for public comment on a regular basis on a lot of the issues that we discuss, and on a lot of issues that people just aren't aware are even taking place. And so, Bill, I'm really excited about the, uh, the proposal that you made earlier about the task force. I think it's critically important, and I hope that one of the first areas that your task force discovers is that this council does not do an adequate job of weighing public opinion and weighing the needs of our community, because we don't really hear directly from folks in a way that is a productive conversation. And conversation is important. It's not just one-way communication. It's important that the public be involved in these conversations. And Juna, I do hope that we can put in place within the next year, your town hall idea, so that we can at least get in front of people in a place where people meet, not just in municipal building on a regular basis, so that as we are moving forward and having budget discussions and proving, putting our money where our mouth is, proving what we want to fund, that the public feels that they have more buy-in as to what that process looks like. It doesn't just happen within municipal building. So, thank you, and I appreciate Dan, and I appreciate Bob answering my questions. I do think they were critically important. We do have opportunities, even after passing this budget today, to reallocate funding. I do not want mental health to be grant-funded. It has to be funded moving forward from a sustainable funding source. It must be in the general budget, and we've got to put our money collectively where our mouth is in making change. So thank you. Thank you all for engaging in this discussion. I know it's not easy, and I really appreciate the additional time everyone has put into this. Thank you.
If I, if I may, just, just for clarification, just on the, on the mental health piece, just to be clear, that um the mental health funding that we provide as a city is not grant-funded. It actually does come from your general fund. As a matter of fact, um, this year, you're providing in the budget significantly more dollars toward that effort. If you remember, we've talked about closing that funding gap. The majority of it is provided by the state. The state provides the funding. It's not a grant. That's just what they provide. And we've been trying over the last two years to close that gap. The cost of that went up significantly in this last year because of how the state actually does it. But just to be clear, that fund, there are other mental health programs certainly that are grant-funded, but the majority of the funding actually is embedded in your, um, in your general fund budget, just, just to be, just to be clear with that one.
And I just want to say, I don't think the, the word you say, Ms. Davis, that every woman of this council would not support in terms of what we're doing and the programs and, and the funding, what we will do. I think we've done a job that's been tough. Uh, COVID fifteen, COVID nineteen changed the, it changed the ballgame. It, it was a game changer. But I don't want to leave this meeting with the implications that we're not doing as much as we can, or have not done as much as we can for the public, to chime in on this. Uh, we've opened doors, as Councilman Best Bitch said, that there may be other ways, you know, we could do this, but we as a council have been open and are willing, and if anything comes up, I don't think to a person, we would not do what we'd have to do to take care of that. And I think Councilman Best Bitch said it the other day in the newspaper, what we're doing is not carved in stone. It's not carved in stone. We're gonna do that. We'll do whatever it takes, because that's how committed this body is regarding our citizens. And so I don't want to, to anybody to think that we're, we're, we're not caring or we won't take care of what we need to do as it, as it comes before us. Because again, a lot of things we're not aware of, and COVID nineteen has changed this game. And we want to make sure that we do what we have to do, and we're gonna have other discussions throughout, throughout this city. We're gonna be talking to people. We're gonna be engaged. And I think that Equity Committee has been brought together, will change that. You'll see that change. Uh, and hopefully through this, we'll see more people come out to our budget meetings and proposals where we don't talk. We don't talk. We don't say, let them talk, and then we take that information. So that's all I'm concerned is, is that this council has done what it can. We'll do. Uh, we're engaged. It's been the most engaging council to the public that I've ever been on. And I've been on, been here sixteen years. And so, uh, I just want to make that statement, and, and as we get ready to approve this budget, we want to make sure that the citizens understand, we're listening. We're listening, have been listening. And I think we've listened more, and we'll continue to listen, and we're gonna have to go, as we go forward, we're going to, to have to listen and bring people to the table. Bring people to the table that should be there, as we talked about earlier. But uh, I don't want to sell this council short. We'll do what we need to do. Whatever happens, we'll do it. Uh, again, because we control this. This is our budget. Don't forget that. This is our budget. And we're doing, I think, and we all agree that this is the best we could do. We all agreed before we got here, that we're satisfied. This is the best we could do. Things are gonna continue to change. As you said, as someone said, it's regularly evolving. This is, is a fluid situation. But I know the heart of this council and what we're doing, and that's all I'm saying. I want to make sure we stay on track, and I have every confidence in the world that this, not only this council, but this city administration, to do, and will do, what we've asked of them and what we need to do to make sure our citizen has the best quality of life that we can. And so right now, we're in the middle of a panic, and we're in the middle of a, of a situation with, with uh, the protests and the issues. But we just want to assure people that without a doubt, that we're gonna be doing what we need to do. So with that, uh, we'll go back to item number three, and Madam Clerk, uh, I think, I think you read the title of paragraph. No questions or comments? Any further comments, so we can vote on uh this item, item number three, uh, the annual general stormwater utility. Call the room, please.
All right. Ms. Davis.
Hi.
Ms. Osborne.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Ms. Best Bitch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item number four is the endorsement of the capital improvement program update for FY twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five. Uh, there are two measures. The first is a resolution. Can I get a motion?
First, White Boyd, move the resolution.
Juna Osborne, second.
Madam Clerk, read the title of paragraph, please.
A resolution endorsing the update to the capital improvement program submitted by the city manager in the city council agenda report of June fifteenth, twenty twenty.
All right, any questions or comments by members of council? Very well, Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Osborne.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Ms. Best Bitch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's the budget ordinance.
Juna Osborne, move the budget ordinance.
Second, Vice Mayor Cobb.
Second, Vice Mayor Cobb.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding for the FY twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five update, the capital improvement program, amending and reordaining certain sections of the twenty twenty-one general capital projects and grant funds appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Uh, any comments by members of council? Madam Clerk, call the rule.
Ms. Davis.
Hi.
Ms. Osborne.
Hi.
Ms. Price.
Hi.
Ms. White Boy.
Hi.
Mr. Best Bitch.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Hi.
And Mayor Lee.
Hi. And the budget ordinance passes. Item number five is the approval of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four HUD consolidated plan and twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one HUD annual plan. There is a resolution.
Anita Price, move the resolution.
Phil Best Pitch, second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of paragraph.
A resolution approving the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four consolidated plan and twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one annual plan, authorizing, authorizing the city manager or the city manager's desk if need to submit the approved consolidated plan and twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one annual plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for final review and approval, and authorizing the execution of all necessary documents pertaining to such consolidated plan and annual plan.
Any comment from members of council? And Madam Clerk, call the rule.
Ms. Davis.
Hi.
Ms. Osborne.
Hi.
Ms. Price.
Hi.
Ms. White Boy.
Hi.
Mr. Best Bitch.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Hi.
And Mayor Lee.
Hi. And the resolution passes. All right. Finally, the adoption of a pay plan for officers, employees, council-appointed officers and constitutional officers of the city, and authorization for certain salary adjustments and merit increases and monthly stipends for certain board and commission members effective July first, twenty twenty. There's an ordinance.
Chris White Boyd, move the ordinance.
Juna Osborne, second.
Madam Clerk, read the title of paragraph.
Ordinance to adopt and establish a paid plan for officers, employees, council-appointed officers and constitutional officers of the city effective July first, twenty twenty, providing for certain salary adjustments, authorizing various annual pay supplements for certain officers and employees, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, any questions or comments by members of council? Madam Clerk, call the rule.
Ms. Davis.
Hi.
Ms. Osborne.
Hi.
Ms. Price.
Hi.
Ms. White Boy.
Hi.
Best Bitch.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Hi.
Mayor Lee.
Hi. And, uh, the vote is unanimous and the ordinance passes. Thank you. All right, the council, this council meeting will stand in recess for a closed meeting. And thereafter, we convene at seven o'clock PM in the council chamber uh, here in, uh, room four-fifth in the O C T L Municipal Building. Uh, this meeting also will be conducted by electronic communication means, uh, without a quorum of council physically present in one location as permitted by law. All right.
Mr. Mayor, before, um, you recess, I just want to confirm that you all have the, uh, access code to come to the closed meeting.
You can do it again. Always give it, if you got it out, could you read it again there?
Send it out again.
Does everybody have that access code to the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I wrote it down.
Okay. All right, Dan, if that be the case, if Dan's gone, I'm seeing, I got tons of paper here, probably somewhere. But, uh, we'll be, we'll be in recess. We'll just be in recess. And I'll, and, uh, probably in the next ten minutes, we'll reconvene in a closed session. Thank you.